Thank you all for coming tonight. This is a regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It is 6:00, Thursday, July 5th, 2018. We begin each of our meetings with a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. This evening it will be led by Councilman Morris.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call please, Michelle.
Councilperson Allen.
Here.
Councilperson Azar.
Here.
Councilperson Crossen.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Morris.
Here.
Councilperson Nassar.
Present.
Councilperson Nation. Ader present when he's absent.
Thank you. At this time we offer 30 minutes for public comments on items that are not on the agenda for tonight's meeting. If you don't have a copy of the agenda, they are right up here up front next to Mr. Taylor. Having said that, is there anybody who would like to address the council at this time? Going once, going twice? Okay. Corrections of the jury.
There are none.
Communication from the mayor.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Duke Bennett. I have handed out a couple of things. We'll get to the appropriation 5 and 6 in the next order of business. The sanitary bond fund and redevelopment loan update that you'll find should have been on the top of your little short stack that I set there before you got here. Hopefully everybody can find that. So this is an update on a couple of things. The first part of this is the sanitary bond fund activity. It's taken place over the last month, basically. And so I just kind of want to walk you through this just briefly. I'm not going to spend much time on this. So our cash balance at 5:3118 in the sanitary bond fund was a negative $187,000. The spring property tax installment hit our bank on 6/14 of 18. It was a little over $2.1 million. On 6/29, we repaid $1.5 million and some odd change to the wastewater treatment plant from what we did in January of this year. So our cash balance at 6:3018 was a positive $453,24509, following along with the plan that we discussed from Umba and what the DLGF approved for us to do to be able to work through this sanitary bond fund issue that we had the resolution last month. Then on July 2nd is when our bond payment was due, and so that's where we borrowed money from the wastewater utility. It was a total of $3.4 million, which, and you remember last week we had that discussion about what will the actual amount be? It was 3.4 even. The maximum amount in that resolution was $3.813100, which is the actual bond payment amount. Once again, we put that in there just so it would cover the maximum amount. And so the bond payment was made, and so we have a projected cash balance at the end of this month of about $40,000. So we'll have to go through this cycle once every six months, basically, but I wanted to share with you how that played out and what the dates were that those particular activities occurred. So any questions on that first part, and then I'll move to the second part? Okay? All right. Second part is the redevelopment loan activity. We repaid $4.5 million to the Central Business district on 6/29 and repaid $500,000 to the State Road 46 TIF on 6/29. The new loan from the downtown TIF of $1.5 million will be taken later this month, probably on the 27th. That's kind of what we're shooting for. And the new loan from the State Road 46 TIF of $500,000 will be taken out on that same day. They will write two checks to us and we will deposit it in our account. And then that $2 million loan will be repaid in full no later than December 31st. Probably be paid back on the 28th of December, but it has to be paid by December 31st. So we did exactly what we said we were going to do on the timelines that we set, and I just wanted you to be aware that those activities had occurred. So any questions about that?
Councilman Elliott.
Once the $2 million is repaid, is it contemplated there won't be any other borrowing?
No, I think my thing right now, my thinking is we need to renew it in December and then we can end it in June of next year. Another six months. We'll see. All depends on a couple of things, but that, I don't want to take that off the table yet. So we'll have to come back to the council and do this in December if we decide to do something.
Thank you.
And that's what I'd shared before, and that was my plan from before, another six months.
Councilman Nassar.
Just to follow up, would that be another $2 million?
Yeah, or less. Yeah, it will not be more than $2 million. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Reports from city officials.
Just a reminder, there will be a special meeting July 12th, 2018, at 5:30 p.m. Notices will go out either tomorrow or Monday.
Thank you. Reports from Board of Public Works and Safety.
There are none.
Reports from standing committees.
I believe Councilman, Councilperson Elliott has a report.
I do, and I passed out a package of documents. It's a lot longer than it really needs to be, but it provides the full detail of what I'm trying to get across. At budget time, I try to get a good feel of what our individual fund and total budget surpluses are going to be. And that has gotten much more complicated with the 1782 notices and the movement of the property tax revenues from one fund to another because they're normally shifted in response to the DLGF's response to our budgets. And I understand that and have to live with that. So I decided really not to look back at the 2018 net budget surplus until we got the June property tax distribution. And we kind of knew, you know, what that was going to be. So Document A, that's attached right behind the memo, there'll be three or four pages, A1, A2, A3, A4. Those are the pages off of Gateway that summarize the property tax revenue that we received by fund in June. Okay? On page A1, over on the left-hand side, I copied the adding machine tape that indicates those amounts for the general and other funds totaled $12,885 million, which is a good number. And I want you to know that, and you'll see that as we go forward. So that's all A is, is just the details that support the property tax revenue that was received by any fund. Okay? Then Exhibit B is a spreadsheet that I've updated over the years. Over in the right-hand column, you'll see a June 2018 amount, and I dropped in the details of the $12,884,854. Then the right-hand column, the 2018 projected total amount, I got that amount from a report that we received from the mayor related to the response to the 1782 notice. That's where the $24,000,025,000 total comes in that's labeled by D. And then I just kind of backed into the December amount. That's just the difference. So the June plus the December equals the total. The June portion is 53.6%. The December portion is 46.4%, and that's a pretty reasonable percentage because we always receive more in June than we receive in December because some people pay both of them in May, and we get that money a little quicker. Well, that 53.6% average is about what the prior three years' average amount was received. So I then, then Exhibit C, C1 and C2, those are the documents, that's the document on C1 in the bottom right there where the $24,025 comes from. And that again was the report that the mayor gave us back, and I believe it was February or March, I'm not exactly sure which, where the amended property tax distribution amount appeared. That's where that came from. And then page C2 was just some of the narrative that he gave to us that talked about how the property tax, why the property tax revenue went up, and the fact that they were moved to the funds that needed them the most to make everything work okay. Then Exhibit D, the originally typed numbers was where I ended last fall when we did the budget. So all I did was pencil in the new property tax numbers and then pencil in the new major numbers where there are 2018 surplus or deficit. That column's about a little over halfway over. That's a pretty significant, a pretty significant column. So with the property tax revenue that's going to the general fund, I think we have a budget, a surplus budgeted of $2.5 million, almost $2.6 million. You'll see that again about a little over halfway over the general fund line, 2018 surplus budget column. Then all the way down at the bottom of that column, you'll see $3,087,920. That's the total surplus of all the funds that are on this page, and these are the funds that we deal with at budget time. So I always try to, when I get to this point, because, you know, we generate budget surpluses one year, then we can pay down short-term borrowings in the next year. So I just kind of, I'm kind of looking for, you know, and then we'll also have some underspend of the expenses. We never spend every penny of every line, so that $3,087, that might go up to $3.5 million with a 1.5% underspend. Underspend might be a little bit, little bit less. So I want us to, you know, just to be aware of what the property tax revenue was. That Schedule B, Page B, that spreadsheet, June of 2017, we received $12,095 versus That's $790,000 or 6.5% more. That's a chunk of additional money there that came in. So that's my point and purpose, and I just kind of have a pretty good feel of what our overall attitude is towards these short-term borrowings is, and that's to, you know, reduce it as judiciously and rapidly as we can. And just want to get that out there as, you know, budget time is about here again. We're into, into July. Questions?
Councilman Nassar.
Earl, when you talk about June, the increase, I know we've had a lot of new construction and so forth, and Mayor, you might be able to answer this. Do we have any pending appeals that might change that number in the future?
Well, there's always appeals. It all depends what kind of those appeals are. I'm not sure, aware of any big ones except Meyer that's still out there. I'm only a bit interested.
Thank you. Councilman Elliott.
I'd just like to thank Earl for all your hard work in preparing all this for us, especially with us having a couple appropriations today, kind of an ease and know that you're okay with where the numbers are. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Mayor, can we talk a little bit about bus service to West Terre Haute? I'm not sure I, you know, I understand why we're going there.
Okay. We get a lot of requests, have been for many, many years. Right when I first took office, there was an effort to do that, and it didn't work out because of financial reasons, and it was stopped. And I've been looking to do this for quite some time. We've had a lot of discussions at the NPO level. They provide, you know, some transportation in the county outside of the urbanized area. And with DADC closing down, if you will, many, we're not picking anybody yet. We used to, that used to be a part of our regular route. And nobody, we're going there 12 times a day and not getting anybody for the last four months. And so we decided this would be a good time to just redirect that particular route so we don't have to make any significant changes and find out if there is a, if the demand that we get, the requests that I get, if it really makes sense to do it. So we're going to do a several-month experiment. It's not going to cost us anything. It's costing us the same already spending, and we're going to find out if there is an opportunity there. If there is, if it works out from that perspective, then we'll be reaching out to the West Terre Haute Town Council to seek funding like we do on our route to Ivy Tech or our route Riot Zoo or 50-50 Park.
Okay. Well, we have, if I understand this, 12 trips a day, and we're hoping to get 10 passengers a day. And I think that would be better than what we're getting zero passengers on the route now.
Before we change it.
Is there, did anybody put together any kind of budget on the incremental costs related to making the run to West Terre Haute, what the revenue's going to be and what the cost is going to be?
Well, no, I mean, not from the perspective of revenue. We don't know how many riders there'll be. Yeah, you can do estimates. We know what a fixed cost will be. So we're driving up there for no reason, and to make these changes are a pretty significant deal that you have to report to the feds. So to make an adjustment to a schedule is not that big of a deal. If we eliminate that schedule, then we're going to have to redo all of our routes.
But I mean, there's city of Terre Haute property tax money that goes into this fund.
Mm-hmm. A little bit.
Half a million dollars.
Yeah, it's, it'll be less than that.
But to spend a half a million dollars.
Yes.
And to spend that money to service non-Terre Haute just makes me wonder.
Well.
Why would we do that?
Sure.
And not reduce the cost of the transit department and direct that property tax money somewhere else?
Well, in a few months, if, we may have to make that determination. We're just going to see if all this public outreach for the last four or five years is really real or not, so we kind of make a final decision.
Okay. But 10 people a day at $3 or $4, it's $30 or $40 versus.
Zero.
Somebody spending, you know, 30 minutes a trip, 12 trips to go over there and come back.
Once again, let's, I think it's worth a few months of just giving this a shot and then seeing because otherwise we're going to have to redo all the routes. It'll be a pretty significant change.
Okay. Well, I just think that was a, you know, there's an opportunity there to reduce the cost of that system and direct property tax money to a greater need.
Yeah, it's just this year we can't redirect those funds. So we can not spend them, but we can't redirect those funds until the next round of 1782 notice. So we could do it for next year.
Sooner or later.
Right, next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Earl. Thank you, Mayor. Reports from non-standing committees.
There are none.
Items previously tabled.
There are none.
Tax payments for confirmation.
There are none.
Items on second reading.
There are none.
Items on first reading.
Appropriation 5, 2018. $492,800 from motor vehicle highway, street number 0201 to 0018, to paving, number 422100, for $338,500. To principal and note, MVH, number 439178, for $131,800. To interest on note, number 439179, for $12,500. And to purchase of equipment, MVH, number 444010, for $10,000.
Commissioner.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Duke Bennett. I gave you on one of your handouts, you should see appropriation 5, 2018 notes. I just want to walk you through that briefly to explain the point of this appropriation. So we're requesting the total. Sorry, Dave, it's okay. Your boss is checking on you. We're asking for $492,800 to be moved out of the MVH fund cash balance to this budget. So it breaks down as follows. The DLGF 1782 notice that we talked about earlier, we're going to have to come back to the council and deal with the $288,850. If you remember, you know, last year we had an $8 million reduction. This year we had a $288,000 reduction out of our $90 million budget. And so the MVH fund was the one that was hit. So we're asking for the $288,850 as part of that $492,800 total request to go, basically to go back in and fund the budget up to what it needed to be. We're also asking for an additional $139,000. And then the way this, these two things come together but break out, they go into three specific line items. The first one into paving. We, there's a couple of things about this. This is the MVH fund, and so we have to maintain that 50-50 split. We got to do, we can't, we can't spend more than 50% of our revenues on operating expenses. You have to spend 50% of what you, of your revenues on paving streets. And so when we made that calculation a year ago, when we put the budget together, things have changed just a little bit. So we need to put $338,500 into the paving line item so we keep that budgeted balance where we need it to be. The next bullet, we want to put $131,800 in principal to note and $12,500 in interest to note. Last year, when Wesley was gone during, our city controller was gone during the budgeting process, and somehow, an existing payment, there's three payments that we're making there. We make one on a dump truck, one on our three leaf ax, and one on a boom mower that's due this year. The budget supports it, it's not in the line item. So we're asking as we put this appropriate to money, we need to appropriate money into that particular line item. The third item is $10,000 into the purchase of equipment line item. This year's budget has $20,000 in it, but we were involved in a car accident several months ago where a drunk driver ran into one of our hot boxes that we do Pahoe patching with, and they destroyed it. And we're dealing with that. It wasn't our fault, but we had to buy a new one, and it was $28,000. And so we put the $10,000 with the 20, gives us $30,000 for this year. We know we have another $1,500 or so of equipment we need to purchase for the rest of the year. So the whole point of this appropriation is, we have the funds in the MVH fund, and we want to move those dollars over. So if you flip to the second page, this is all the financial information you'll need to make this decision regarding the MVH fund. Starting in January, our cash balance, January 1st was $678,000. That first number in the top left-hand corner. And then as you work your way through, January, February, March, April, and May are all actual expenses, actual revenues, actual expenses. June is partially done. We haven't closed the books on June yet, obviously, and so we can't put any firm numbers in there, but those are estimates, very good estimates. And then July through December would be our estimates for the rest of the year. So we have factored in the additional appropriation, conservative numbers on revenues, and what we believe we're going to spend. And so the bottom line is, we're going to end the year with about $546,000 in, as a cash balance versus $678 coming in this year, appropriating nearly a half a million dollars into this fund. Our reserve at the end of the year will be 13%, which I thought this would be important, especially from Councilman Elliott's perspective, as we've talked about our reserve targets. And let me mention just briefly, Paige has completed our financial update, our comprehensive financial plan update, and she will be coming in the August meeting to present that. So last year's plan, with all the new information, has been finished now. She's on vacation this week, but that's why she couldn't come tonight, but I'm going to have her come in August to go through the comprehensive financial plan. And so our reserve at the end of the year will be 13%. Our target for 2018 on all of our funds is 5%. So we're good on this one, even by making this additional appropriation. So that should provide all the information you need to be able to feel comfortable to do this appropriation. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding appropriation 5.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on appropriation 5, 2018?
Mr. President.
Councilman Garrison.
Since I'm not seeing any questions and it looks like this is laid out pretty well, I would move that the city council vote on appropriation, vote at its first reading on appropriation 5, 2018.
Second discussion.
Councilman Nassar.
I did have a question, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yep.
Is there an urgency to do this?
Um, no, it just, you know, it's really bookkeeping more than anything. We want to get behind this before we get into the budgeting. So, you know, in the past, we've typically brought things to you in December, and I just soon, I've requested the council was, bring it to us when you can instead of dumping it all at the end of the year. This one's an easy to take care of because of the 1782 notice especially. I'd like to get that behind us.
So no paving will not be finished if we don't do this?
Not, but tonight or between next week. I mean, we're already doing paving, but this will be for next month maybe, or next two weeks from now.
I know we got a spreadsheet that you had made, and I know I've asked you this repeatedly about the financials that we're supposed to get, and I remember last month you had said that we would receive January, February, and March by today, and we've only received January.
Mm-hmm.
So when do you expect to have the rest of the month finished?
February may be done tomorrow. We're doing final review on that, and March and April are coming along really quickly. So probably first of the week, middle of next week.
I know that there was a software issues was the cause of that. When did you realize that you were going to do a software upgrade?
Last year.
Okay. Did you have to account how many man-hours was going to be involved?
Oh, you never know until you get into it. You estimate because the vendor tells you what, they give you an estimate of what their portion is, but we've spent thousands of man-hours on this project so far, and we still got hundreds to go.
Well, I mean, I know every time I ask for financials, it makes it seem like I don't think the controllers, the offices is doing their part to enter that information in. I just don't understand if we knew it was going to be a lot of man-hours, why we didn't prepare accordingly.
We did.
Because now, because now the council is repeatedly waiting for end-of-month financials.
You know, from the perspective of this particular appropriation, those financials have no impact at all. I've given you what you need. That, what I've given you tonight is pulled from Fundware, pulled from Financial Edge, and pulled from ADP. I'm not going to do that for every fund in order to get council reports out. So we're going to give you the accurate reports. January's finished, February's almost done, two more will be right behind it because we've got our program, our algorithm is working now from ADP. We found some issues on their end, and you'll have them very soon. But you've got the information you need for this appropriation.
I yield. Councilman Crossen.
Mayor, I don't doubt that, and I appreciate getting this tonight, but we did just get it tonight.
Uh-huh. We just got it done today.
And I appreciate that. So I would just say as a matter of discussion that I would prefer that we act on it next week so that we at least have an opportunity to look at this all more carefully. I appreciate that. I yield.
Councilman Elliott.
Mayor, the paving amount, that's to meet state requirement.
Yes.
Right? Because that level.
Got to spend 50% on paving.
Okay.
Street maintenance. It could be a few other things, but it's primarily paving.
Primarily that. Talk to me about the hot box and the car accident.
Somebody ran into the back, you know, we were pulling the hot box, somebody ran into the back of it, destroyed it. The insurance is going to give us a little bit of a settlement, but it's depreciated so much that it's going to be a minor amount. So we may be able to appropriate a little bit more money in there later, maybe a few thousand bucks. But we had to pay $28,000 for a brand-new one.
Okay.
And we had not budgeted for that because it didn't need to be replaced yet. It was probably still two or three more years of use out of it. I understand. Thank you.
Mr. President. Councilman Garrison. I think the motions on the floor, first and second. There's no dire need this week to do this, and seemed to be some resistance on which are my motion to do the first reading. Does anyone have any issue with that? Does the second have to be withdrawn as well? All right, then the motion has been withdrawn. If there are no further comments from the council, next side please, Michelle.
Appropriation 6, 2018. $450,000 from local road and street number 0202, 0019, to paving, local road and street number 422100, for $300,000. And to workmen's con, local road and street number 435010, for $150,000. Into workman's comp, local road street number 435010 for $150,000.
Petitioner.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Duke Bennett. This appropriation regarding our LRS fund, we want to appropriate $450,000 from the cash balance into the LRS budget for this year. And that breaks down into two pieces. $300,000 for a new paving line item in the LRS budget. We've not had a paving line item in there before. Couple of things going on there. One is, our costs are going up. As most of you have probably been following, every project we do is more expensive. The market is really robust for those in that industry. And so the bids are coming in high on everything. And so even though we've got new revenue coming in, we really don't have extra dollars to spend. And so after this bad winter, I could use a few more hundred thousand dollars based on engineering's estimate of some things we really need to repair this year and not put it off till next year for smaller projects. And so, we wanna be able to do that. So it's kind of the combination of having the flexibility to deal with rising costs when bids come back, and two, to do a little bit of extra work. The second piece is $150,000 to a workman's compensation line item that we're asking you to add. It's an appropriation to an unfunded line in this budget to take some of the pressure off the MVH fund. When we go back and we talk about the 50-50 split, I can't pay that $150,000 out of MVH or it makes the numbers get out of whack again, because that's an operating cost. And so, we are able by statute to shift that over here and take it out of the MVH fund. So it's MVH and LRS both fund the street department. But we can't spend certain things out of the LRS fund. This is one of them that you can. So we're moving it over there till we kind of catch up on the workman's comp. We've had a couple of individuals that have been off work for quite some time. One is now off, the other one will be going off soon. And so, this really pays kind of what we've accumulated this year to date and what we think we have left. And then we can go back to the MVH fund supporting workman's comp. This is just an outlier, basically, a situation that we're in. And this is the way to fix it, because if I have you increase the MVH budget line item $150,000, then we're gonna need to increase the paving side by $150,000. That's really it. This one's pretty straightforward. This isn't anything tricky. So the second page is your financial report. That will show you beginning cash balances, ending cash balances, the additional appropriation being spent in here. Same thing as the last one, same information just regarding the LRS fund. Our reserve right at the end of the year is gonna be 36%, even after we do this. And so our target's 5%. So we are way ahead of the game on that one. The other thing I'd like to mention to you is, the state legislature is watching closely what's happening with LRS and MVH. Now that we've got this new revenue, they're defending themselves in a way that they wanna make sure you're really spending it on roads and you're not just putting it in the bank. And so we're, when the State Board of Accounts audits this year, it's not gonna be an official audit item, but the state legislature and others have asked for some information through the audit process to make sure that communities aren't building up huge cash reserves in those two funds. You should have a cash reserve, but state recommends 15%, not more than that. And so, we need to be spending that money as we go forward. So we'll build next year's budget accordingly to hit our target for reserves and still be able to spend the money like we're supposed to, so we don't get dinged somewhere down the road. And it wouldn't just be us, it would be everybody. They wanna make sure we're spending the money that they have approved. So just a caveat. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on appropriation six, 2018? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Councilman Elliott.
Mayor, I know there's, and then quote me if I'm wrong here, the rating system on the roads.
Uh huh.
Is there any way that we can obtain a copy of, you know, how the roads rate?
Sure.
To which ones need done?
Yep.
I'd appreciate that.
You know, I don't know in an electronic format what that might look like, but let me see. Because I've got a paper copy. It's big, as you can imagine. We've got 750 lane miles of streets, and so it's pretty significant. We had to do that, we only had one. We had to bring it up to a standard for the state in order to qualify for the community crossings. So we did that a year ago, and now we just update it every year.
I appreciate that.
I will get that. I just, I don't have it myself in electronic format, I just have a paper copy.
No worries.
See what we can do.
Thank you.
Any further comment from council? Councilman Elliott.
Mayor, did we have any workman's comp budgeted in MVH or LRS?
MVH there should have been. I didn't bring my MVH budget. Should be. I apologize, I did not bring my budget for 2018 for MVH. There was not an LRS.
I see that.
Yeah, that's a new one.
But I don't see any in MVH either.
Then, some of the budgets are covered by the Board of Public Works, because in the past, it was all Board of Works, covered all the departments. And we started putting those out in the individual budgets that could support them. I'd have to just double-check on that. I thought there was, because I thought we, I thought we had discussion even with the council when we were looking at a couple of those high expenses last year, that it was in there. So I will look and see what the scoop is.
I think some clarification would be...
Yep, I can do that. I thought it was there. But if it's not, then...
So what's happened since last September, October, when we put the budget together, that brings us a $300,000 additional appropriation for paving?
Just a bigger need and the costs are going up. I mean, as you know, just on Lafayette Avenue, it came in $800,000 over budget. Right out here on 41, Indox facing an issue of a million-dollar increase in their paving out here. Everything we do from a project, I don't know what First and Holman's gonna come in at. So I need to be able to, versus coming to you guys, after I get a bid, let's say we get a bid back and we wanna complete the work this year, the timing is not gonna allow me to react to that. We'll probably have to delay it till next year. Our cost is going up. So we just need a cushion there. And we've got some extra streets that Scott Barber has brought to me and said, really, Mayor, we can't wait till next year. We didn't know, this winter just totally destroyed them. I had no idea about that last year. So we've got two or three streets, several blocks and streets that need to be done.
Which streets are those?
I can bring you that list. He's got a lot of them. I told him we could do a few.
Okay.
We can't do all of them.
Okay. Well, my concern is, you know, if we spend down these funds, how are we gonna reduce our short-term borrowings going forward?
I factored that in, though, these particular appropriations. We're not bringing any other appropriations.
I'm sorry?
We're not bringing any other appropriations. We really haven't brought any new appropriations to the council in a few years. These are pretty unique, very specific. And we can fund them, because I've got that in mind. I mean, that's the master spreadsheet shows kind of what's the effect here, what's the bottom line.
So how much are we gonna reduce short-term debt next year?
My plan right now is to reduce the TAW by half a million dollars and eliminate the redevelopment borrowing in June. So that'd be another two and a half million. We did three million this year, that'd be five and a half million total over two years, or really 18 months. That's pretty significant. I feel good about that.
That's, different folks will define that in different ways.
Yeah, they will, but it's better than what we've been doing. It's improving dramatically. So we're going from roughly nine million to, you know, three, I mean, it'll be four, three and a half million dollars that we'll borrow next year from January to December, and that's just for cash flow purposes. We pay that off within the year. So we went from nine to three and a half in 18 months. I think that's pretty good.
Well, I mean, I understand. I'm gonna make one other comment about the borrowings that the rest of council may not like, but that's, you know, I'm still gonna make it. It makes sense for us to continue a small level of borrowing from Department of Redevelopment. I mean, they can't spend all their money. They've got to have some reserves. So if we got that down to a million and in place of having a TAW borrowing at 4%, I mean, that saves us over a hundred grand a year in interest. You know, you'll hear me not give up on that, but I realize it takes, you know, their comfort level and approval to, you know, to do that also. But, thank you.
And I'm not gonna say I'm willing to support that, that's just not what the will of the council has been. So I'm working with you guys, rolling this together.
Ayo. Council, any further discussion? If not, we'll move on to the next item, please.
General Ordinance Four, 2018, reading City Code, Chapter Four, Article 22, amped and remiss.
Petitioner, please.
Point of order...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just a point of order on this. Michelle, is it four or is it seven?
It is.
General Ordinance Seven?
Four. Because I kept trying to make it seven. I corrected the website and I corrected the original agenda.
Well, I copied it off of the website today, and it copied off as seven, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I clarified that this afternoon.
Okay, I beat you to the punch then. Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure about that.
So just to clarify, it is General Ordinance Four.
Yes, General Ordinance Seven's not even been filed yet, so.
Okay, thank you. Petitioner.
Mr. President, members of the council, Sean King, Assistant Chief of Thorough Police Department. I apologize, I wasn't here the last time that we really had any discussion about this ordinance. Since I was the one that initially brought this to the council in 2016, I really wanted to be here and wasn't able to. Since that time, I've addressed all the members of council through email with my public statement on the specific issues that we had. So I don't wanna rehash those now, other than if you have specific questions, I'll answer them. But to move on along with these amendments, what I'd like to say is that I feel that this council absolutely made the right decision in 2016, when, as I recall, unanimously voted to pass this ordinance. I feel it was the right thing, in my opinion, it's likely saved lives since then. That being said, I was certainly open to joining a working group found by, formed by Councilwoman Crossen to explore any possible enhancements. I don't ignore that there were other people that had concerns and we wanted to address them. I think that was the right course of action as well. While the core elements of this ordinance remain in place, and by that I mean, it still would remain a violation if you open an event to the public or you charge a fee for it. While those core elements remain in place, our working group consisting of members of the public, this council, and myself from law enforcement, we've found several areas where some changes can actually benefit everybody. I'm sure that you all have copies in front of you, with the underlying portions being the new additions, but I just briefly wanted to go over those, the high points of those here and now. So if you have any questions, I can address them. The number one thing is the name change. We changed, any mention of the word "dance" is now replaced by "special event." Hopefully that will cut down on some of the frame setting of some things, but hopefully it's a better understanding of the purpose of the ordinance. Next, in Section 4-311, subsection B, I had discussed, previously had said, "which is not advertised in any way." We felt that that should be changed to "which is not advertised to the general public in any manner." Our concerns were, there were that while this ordinance, like I said, originally had formed in Indianapolis years before we adopted it, maybe didn't take into consideration Facebook and other social media that's where, if you would invite your family or friends to Facebook, that could be considered advertising in a way. We didn't want that confusion, and no one's ever been side of that. But to alleviate that confusion, here we propose that we change it to the new language, which is "which is not advertised to the general public in any manner." Section 4-313, the liability insurance, we've gone back and forth on this. If you recall, during the original adoption of this ordinance, it was one million, and that's how we'd adopted it from Indianapolis. However, City Legal, if you recall at the time, amended it to five million to cover some guidelines they thought better fit. And then, just a short time later, after we passed it, we amended it again to create a tier system so that if smaller groups could have a smaller insurance policy. Here we just went back to one million for everybody, and I think that's reasonable, and it was based on some of the concerns from the people, especially in our working group. It doesn't affect the effectiveness of this ordinance one bit to do that, and I think it's appropriate. The next section, 4-314, allows for a permit, in this section allows for a permit to be obtained by a person, 18-year-old, 18-years of age, for those events that don't have alcohol present. Prior to this, it always discussed a responsible person that could get a permit as only being 21. Here it allows for an 18-year-old, should those events not involve alcohol, obviously. And also in 4-314, it spells out the appeals procedure, the timeframe. Whereas here now, you can see that if you are denied for any reason, now you can, it spells it out better that the Board of Public Works will hold a hearing, and I think that's within 30 days to confirm or reverse that denial. So now we spelled it out so a person can, if they don't like the decision initially given that, hey, this is denied, they can go to the Board of Public Works, and they have at least an opportunity for a hearing in that count. The next section, 4-317, allows for the annual special event permit to be renewed without a new fee as long as the information is substantially similar. So essentially, if you are not changing anything, you're still, especially if you're a promoter that does this all the time, that's your business. If you're at a certain location, you don't change your security needs going into the next year, you would just renew it, there would not be an additional fee for that. In Section 4-318, we also have changes that, prior to this, it stated the city may suspend or revoke an issued permit if any of the following conditions are determined, and it lists those. Now, the wording's a little stronger to spell it exactly what that is, and that for the police will be probable cause. Whereas before, just, it wasn't, in my opinion, it wasn't stated well enough to describe what makes, constitute this, and how we use the probable cause standard to determine that. And lastly, in Section 4-319, just added wording that requires proof for non-for-profits. So they're exempt from the fee as we discussed originally. Now it just shows that the, line has been added to show that they have to provide proof of that to be exempt from those fees. And those are the amendments that we've worked up and that we proposed through City Legal that you had before you. I support these changes. I think that we had a general consensus in our working group that these changes would benefit everybody. But I'm certainly open to any questions that you may have from me at this point, if I can answer anything.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on General Ordinance Four, 2018? Counsel. Councilwoman Crossen.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank Assistant Chief King for being here tonight and going over this, and also for serving on our exploratory group that was looking at possible changes for this. I'd also like to thank Councilpersons Morris and Nation. And we also had our city attorney, Eddie Felling, and our head of our Human Relations Department, Melissa Reed, who were there. I think that's all of the city people who were there. I'd like to thank them. And also, we had two members of the public, Ms. Rand Conneran and Mr. Taylor, who had been people who had been here at our previous meeting where this had come up again and had expressed some concerns, which felt were, it was important that we have people who have been concerned about it be in this group, and I'd like to thank all those folks for participating in this. You know, we just want something that works to keep our community safe, but also works for our community members in a way that isn't overburdening them. And hopefully this will get us there to both of those places. So, Ayo.
Councilman Elliott.
I tried to look at this from the standpoint of what events have I been to, or what events do I know about, and would they be required to have this permit and go through this process or not? And most of them, I've been able to see the answer. The one I haven't been able to is, I'm a parishioner at St. Benedict's. We have a two-night festival, and we have bands come and play. And it's open to the public, and they pay a two- or three-dollar cover charge to get in. And there are a few people that get up in front of the stage and dance, but the great majority of the people sit there and watch and don't do that. Is that an event that requires this?
It's open to the public? Then it would require a permit. However, there would be no fee involved because it's a non-profit in that case.
Okay, but the insurance and all that stuff?
Yeah, anytime you're gonna open an event to the public and invite them in, you've gotta have an insurance policy to protect them.
I mean, have you ever been to that?
Maybe a few years ago, I might have worked something there off-duty.
I mean, who on council's been to that? Okay, so they've got to go through that process. Okay, so they've got to go through that process.
Plus, they have a road closure, so the process goes through Board of Works and Department of Public?
I understand that. So who are the permit police here? Who knows who has a permit and who doesn't?
Board of Public Works.
Board of Works?
They only have to show up and petition or to get it, they got it.
When they apply for the road closing, they can apply for this at the same time.
Is the board?
Yes, yes. Same place.
Event, not dance permit, event.
When they go to Public Works to ask for the road closure, they can ask for this at the same time.
Mr. President, we could confirm with Board of Works that they may have to have a bond anyway to close the street. So I think the Board of Works would take that consideration, that they already have a bond for closing the street, and this bond, it's the same type of bond.
It's the same, yes.
So Board of Works handling both of them would take that consideration, that the bond for closing the street could also be applied to the bond for the special event.
And I know from other events, from my...
I just want to make sure they have one, they have the permit, because I don't want to be there when it gets raided. You know, I just wouldn't be a very, would be very upset.
Well, Sean, would you call all of us if you're going to raid that event to get counsel? No, I, yeah, and I would say, Earl, for a couple of other events that I'm involved with in the community where we have to have road closings, but otherwise, it does not involve the city directly, we have to get that bond already. So I think this would not be a big additional burden.
Okay, well, I'll just alert them to make sure they have their special event permit. I don't know what the timeframe is and when you ask, or when you get it, but we'll go there.
The meeting is next weekend, so...
Week, Friday. Yeah, it's a timely question.
Any other comment on counsel? Counselor Manazar.
Have all of the people that you, that would normally, like St. Benedict's and St. Joseph's and the other not-for-profits that do hold these type of functions, have they received information so that they know what they're supposed to do and don't, you know, St. Benedict's will, because they close the street? Let's assume there's a sweepstakes that's open to the public. It's in their building. It's not in a street. Are these people aware of these rules, so that once they do it, all of a sudden, somebody says, "Hey, you can't do that, because you don't have a permit"?
Well, I can say at this point that I don't think we could possibly have any more media coverage to promote that message.
However, someone can deny that they saw that. What I'm saying is, if they are sent information, and we know that they have received that information, then they can't use any excuse.
It's difficult for me to formulate, you know, who do we send all these out to? Like I said, one of the things we discussed was with Connie, she mentioned that when she went to get her street closing, that maybe more communication could have been had there from the Board of Works telling her, "Hey, you also need this permit." So we can work with groups like that, and we're trying to improve what we do with the Board of Works from that aspect. But I don't know unless we, you know, start another working group to try to think of all the events that may occur, and then try to go out and notify them. I understand what you're saying. I can't tell you, you know, we've had, I think the last one I had was the library, they're having, they're sponsoring something they're going to do next month, and we had that whole thing done, and I think maybe a day and a half, you know, I had it back to the Board of Works approved. So we can do it relatively quick, but as far as, I don't know how we can send the message out any more clear than what has been done, that, hey, you have to have a permit if you open to the public, or you're going to charge money.
And there's no timeline, like, for example, fifteen days in advance of your...
It's ten days according to the ordinance.
Ordinance, okay.
Yeah, you want to get it done ten days in advance, but what I can tell you is that we've worked with those groups to try to hurry up, like with Connie's group, they initially had no, they had no security plan whatsoever. It just had three words on there. So then, we worked with them, we developed a plan, and we had them worked and done in a couple of days. The library, a day and a half, we worked with them.
Okay, thank you. One other question.
I was just going to say, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to let you know the City Clerk's Office had been receiving phone calls from organizations, and we've been transferring them to the legal department. So I know that the legal department's been answering a lot of questions, and they did place some information on the website for general questions. So I know that others have been reaching out. I spoke with Molly Meeks in the legal department. She had stated that they had clarified with quite a few groups, especially non-for-profits, on whether they needed to permit or not.
I think one, thank you, and I think one thing that might be easy to do is to contact, in rather than contact all groups, of course, you can't contact every group. I understand that. But there are certain halls that are catering facilities. If these halls are, you let those facilities know, then when they rent that facility or, you know, to a person that's going to open it to the public, they can inform them, hey, before we can allow you to do this, you need this permit, this permit. I would think that might be a nice way to at least eliminate some problems.
Absolutely. I mean, and that was one of the things we just... Yeah.
Yeah, because I know of a couple halls that had a problem, because they, you know, you know who I'm talking about. They weren't aware. And now, they called me in, I said, "Well, I'm sorry, this is the rules, and you have to call." So if even those halls could be notified, so that they have it on record, hey, before you rent, this is open to the public, here's what you have to do. And we're not, we can't sign this with you until you've shown us proof that you have this from the Board of Public Works, this permit. I mean, I don't think that would be a real difficult thing, because there's not that many halls, and we could talk of maybe ten, that read out to people is what I'm talking about.
Sure.
Okay? One other question. You had mentioned probable cause. Is that to shut some, a function down, for example?
Well, the section, if you go back to the section...
I don't have, he was looking on my phone. I can't see you, let alone on his phone.
You go back to the section where that wording is used, it says, "The city may immediately suspend or revoke an issued permit if any of the following conditions are determined." And this is the way it was listed before. "The permit holder made any material false statement or fact in his or application, the permit holder failed to supply and maintain the insurance required, the permit holder acted fraudently or with deceit in his relationship with other persons, partnerships, or corporations." And it lists about nine different circumstances. All that language of probable cause does is strengthen that, hey, you have to have a probable cause that one of these things has occurred.
Thank you. I yield. Good, thank you.
Counselor woman Crossen.
I'm sorry. Anybody else in the council?
You can just vote on this, correct?
No, it's the first reading.
Oh, the new, the new ordinance, gotcha.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Counselor Manazar.
There's no other questions or comments. I make a motion, we take action on General Ordinance Four, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselor Manazar, seconded by Counselor Morris, that we take action tonight on Special Ordinance Nine, two thousand eighteen. I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize, to take action on General Ordinance Four, two thousand eighteen. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, we can now take action on that item.
Mr. President.
Counselor Manazar.
I make a motion, we approve General Ordinance Four, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselor Manazar, seconded by Counselor Morris, that we approve General Ordinance Four, two thousand eighteen. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes. Next item, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Special Ordinance Nine, two thousand eighteen, rezoning of property located eleven forty Locust Street. Just to know, area planning will not meet until July eleventh, so we do not have a recommendation yet.
Petitioner.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the council. I'm here tonight representing Saz Properties LLC. Saz owns a property that is currently used, was used as a locust. If you're familiar with this area, this property's been used over the last ten years for several different successful businesses. Set Properties is wanting to rezone this property from its current classification of C-three to a C-five to allow for indoor mini warehouses. The site plan that leaves in your packet, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody, is there anybody from the audience who'd like to speak on Special Ordinance Nine, two thousand eighteen? Counsel?
No, no action can be taken on this tonight, having said that. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Second.